Good evening to you all and welcome to our April 5th regularly scheduled town council meeting. I welcome you all here tonight, in particular our council members. It's good to see you all in the regular chambers and to see you in person. And to our folks in the audience out there, I'm sure you're noticing that the seating capacity is severely limited due to distancing and so we appreciate you honoring that. Also, as you will note, in keeping with the governor's executive order requiring masks in public, we're asking staff and audience members to wear a mask during the council meeting unless you are exempted from the governor's order. And so thank you for cooperating in that particular item. Having called the meeting to order, I will, at this point in time, recognize council member Elmo Vance, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also will announce the person who is going to lead us in our invocation. Mr. Vance?
Yes. Your pledge stands?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, council, and to the citizens who've gathered here, I've asked a familiar gentleman from the Town of Garner who's been here for a while, well, most of his life, and gone to schools, Reverend Tracy Bell. He's the pastor of New Bethel Christian Church to provide the invocation for us this evening.
It's good to see you, sir.
Good to see you all. Good afternoon to you, most honorable mayor, Ken, Ms. Kathy, Mr. Dillinger, Mr. Vance, Pastor Vance, Gray, Matthews. I'm delighted to be here and for those that are here to bill or do whatever you came to do, this is a great place to do it. And we wish you Godspeed. Let us pray. God, we honor you on this Easter Monday as we gather together to do your bidding and to be about your business. We invite you to be in our midst. We ask that you would lead and guide our aldermen and our town officials to do what you would have us to do. We pray for those who have come to bring business to Garner and also we lift up the residents who are probably equally concerned about their place that they call home. But of all, we pray that your will will be done, God. We surrender our will to your will and we give you all of the glory and all of the honor and all of the praise in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much Reverend Bell. It's good to see you and we wish you and all of your family and congregation quite well, okay?
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Let me just say in advance if it appears that, let me see how I'll use the term, if it appears we're a little rusty tonight, it's probably because we are. This is our first in-person meeting. I didn't calculate back in time, but I think it's been almost a year or maybe a little less. I'm trying to remember, but at any rate, it's good to be back here in person. Hopefully, we'll be able to continue this if things stay as they are, so that's our intent. And for those of you who may not have noticed, obviously, our town hall was officially closed for a long period of time and did officially open today. So we're pleased to be able to have town hall back open and hope we can keep that open for a long time to come. With those comments, I will follow now the agenda and the first item on our agenda is petitions and comments. And I'll read to you that this portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on this agenda. Interested parties can choose to appear live or on the virtual meeting platform or provide written comments that we shared with council. There's an online form that is available and the council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Madam clerk, can you tell me if we received any requests for comments?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. And we'll recognize some folks that are virtual, I believe, at our public hearing in a little while. So, hearing none, council, the next item of business is the adoption of the agenda. And before I ask you to vote on that, I am going to request that we consider one addition at least to the agenda, and that is under the closed section portion. I'm going to ask that we add a session on personnel, which is the same site as the one that is listed there with an A6 at the end instead of A4. That should be a brief session, by the way. So with that request, I'm sorry?
I would need to add one other item. Under new old business, add item number four, fire budget amendment for current equity pay.
Okay.
And you should have some correspondence at your, at the dais that refers to that.
Okay. Oh, council, I have that, should have it available. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay, with those additions noted, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the additions added.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Hearing no other comments or questions, all who are in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If there are any opposition, no, and there is none, so the agenda is approved and thank you very much. I have not received any previous indication of any presentations this evening and, madam clerk, you're not aware of any, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Consent item, excuse me, consent agenda is the next portion of the agenda. There are seven items on there, council, as you probably noted. And I will entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion properly made and seconded.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull the benefits renewal item from the agenda in light of additional information we've received from staff.
Okay. Give me the number, I'm looking at it.
It's number one, Q1.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir.
And if we could move that under new and old business.
Mr. Councilmember Dillinger has requested that that item be pulled and moved under new and old business, okay? Any other recommendations for changing the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, with that recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Properly made and seconded, agree, okay? All right, council, if you're ready to vote, please vote aye if you approve the consent agenda.
Aye.
Aye. There's opposition, but no, okay. All right, it is so ordered. Okay, I'm now going to item H, which is under public hearings, and in a few minutes, we will call the persons who will give testimony at our public hearing. But let me read some instructions and information to you. For all public hearings on the agenda, written comments may be submitted up to 24 hours after the public hearing. Please submit written comments by email to s.gibson@garnernc.gov. That's our town clerk. Items H1 and H2 are quasi-judicial hearings. All persons wishing to provide testimony may do so in person or virtually through teams. However, each person must be sworn prior to giving testimony or answering questions. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing. And so at this point, I'm going to ask council, do any council members have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change? Or have you had any ex parte communications? Have any close familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person or have a financial interest in the outcome? Council, I ask you if any of those things apply, would you indicate it at this time? Okay, hearing none. This is a fact-finding hearing and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. At this time, I will ask the town clerk if she will swear in witnesses. I guess we could swear in witnesses for both H1 and H2. And if there's anybody, I believe, attending remotely or virtually, those persons should be sworn as well. So if you will go back and see our town clerk, she will do a swearing in.
Has everybody signed in? Everybody signed in? Yes, yes, yes? You can raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, madam clerk. At this point in time, I'm going to open the first public hearing, SUP SP 2002 Commerce Park Building 1 and 2. And I believe our first presenter is Ms. Allison Jones. No, it's Mr. Jeff Trezenberg, I'm sorry. Somebody told me you would be here for that, Mr. Trezenberg. So I will recognize you, sir, for your presentation.
Sir, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, Allison has been on vacation, so I'm pinch hitting for her tonight.
Okay.
But this is JS Commerce, Joan Sausage Commerce Center, Buildings 1 and 2, coming back to you. If you'll recall, back in, I believe it was November, one of the November meetings, we had the entire subdivision here before you and that was approved at that time. And so now, we are seeing an application for the first two lots. This is coming back as a special use permit because the gross floor area is over 100,000 square feet, which the ordinance now requires to come back to you as an SUP, special use permit. So these hearings tonight are kind of our first foray into the post-Chapter 160D world. You won't see much in the way of any changes for these two particular hearings as they're pretty much occurring as they would have before. Just instead of them being a conditional use permit, they're now a special use permit, but same process. So for the general case information, you have the name of the applicants. The Doggett family were the owners. And tonight, we're dealing with a tract size of 40.87 acres. They did have an optional additional neighborhood meeting back on February 3rd. I'll touch on that a little more in the future. Again, 40.869 acres. The use would be a warehouse flex space. There is no minimum lot size for the industrial, too heavy industrial zoning district, but there is a 100-foot lot width minimum. You see the setbacks there. Again, on these large lots, we usually don't run into any issues on those. At the neighborhood meeting, which was held virtually, there were six people in attendance, including officers of the current Hunter's Mark HOA. Detailed list of questions and answers is provided in your staff report. And here is the site plan. This was an updated exhibit that we asked for from the applicants, that you could clearly see the shaded areas, which are the buffer tree conservation areas. And I'll just point out, we are, tonight, before you, is complete site approval for lots 1 and 2. Lot 3 is being submitted tonight as a grading-only permit so that they can help balance the grading on sites 1 and 2. And in an effort to do that, we did require at staff level that they show at least the minimum tree canopy being preserved for that site as of right now. And so you'll see these areas in gray up near the existing Wilmington Street and Joan Sausage, where they have committed at a minimum to be keeping canopy in that area for now. We don't have a timeline for lots 3 and 4. Lot 3 is actually dependent on the realignment of Wilmington Road to Calabar Street. So some of lot 3 will actually come from this parcel in the future across Wilmington. But for right now, after hearing some of the concerns previously, that seemed like a prominent location in which to preserve some canopy until such time as those lots come in for further development. We did also, and the applicant will be able to go over this with you in more detail during their presentation, we did ask them to look at the street buffer area, which again is primarily just a separation-type situation. But they did do some analysis of what vegetation was within that street buffer and what might be able to be saved. And I believe that they've got some exhibits that they can show you of trees that they've marked that could be. There's not anything that I would call a substantial stand, but there are some groupings of trees. And so we'll be looking for feedback from you all as to whether or not you feel that those smaller groupings are worth preserving or whether you'd rather see the street trees and new plantings in those areas. Here is a look at the buildings. Again, this was a 3D rendering that they provided for us. You see there the front of the building. I believe this is Building 1. This is the northeast corner, if I'm not mistaken. The rest of the front of the building continues to the left of the screen and the side of the building going back to the right. They've incorporated some roof offsets, some pretty substantial glass for an industrial building at the corners and along the first floor, much like what you would see across the street at the Amazon project. In terms of open space, there was none required as this is a non-residential development. Landscaping and buffer requirements. I will highlight here that we did ask them also to go back when they were producing that last site plan exhibit to get us some exact calculations on Lot 1 because we were kind of eyeballing some of it. They are meeting the tree cover percentage, a minimum of 10% on each of the lots. They do have a little bit of excess on Lot 1, not much, but then considerably more on Lot 2. And then again, Lot 3, at this point, all the lots have to stand on their own. And that tree cover minimum is being met on all three properties. The perimeter buffers range anywhere from 45 and 1/2 to 65 feet. We asked for the 65 feet adjacent to the existing single-family homes on Joan Sausage Road, but did grant the 30% width reduction, but not in plant material for the rest of the buffer since there are no residential homes or development in close proximity. Again, the buffers will still continue to function as a complete screen. Street buffers, again, 15 feet along Joan Sausage Road, and the street trees are to be provided every 40 feet. So for Lot 1, that was, the total is 16, and they are providing 16. And Lot 2 was required to have 12. All of the lighting has been shown in conformance with the UDO as well as meeting our staff recommendations for LED fixtures. The fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. Again, that's so that we don't have any of that stark cold white that's really hard on the eyes. Fire protection, the inspections department has reviewed it together with the fire department and they have given their preliminary approval. For environment and flood plain, this site does have that one small section of a Neuse River buffer and you saw that on the site plan as protected area. It's kind of highlighted there at the back central location in the site. Terms of stormwater management, the Commerce Park is a commercial development site, not located within a watershed protection area. However, it is still subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storms. So this development plan does propose the two wet retention ponds that you saw on the back of the development as part of Lot 2 to treat the impervious surface from this development. These devices will satisfy the quantity requirements for nitrogen, the quantity and quality, except that a nitrogen offset payment will also be required as part of this, which is typical for most developments in Garner. Connection to the City of Raleigh Public Sanitary Sewer and Water System, water lines are in Wilmington and Joan Sausage Roads, posing no major obstacles there. The sewer will be extended from the border with Hunter's Mark, come down through this parcel to the north that they also own, but is not being developed at this time. And then will come across and then meander through the development and then be stubbed to the south for possible future extension to those properties further south. In terms of roads and sidewalks, the Commerce Park site is located on the west side of Joan Sausage at the intersection with Wilmington. Joan Sausage has been widened to a four-lane divided arterial through those cooperative agreements as part of the Amazon project. This development will add some, what I would call fairly minor improvements that would build off of what has been done previously. There are three driveways proposed for this part of the subdivision, one at the northern end of Lot 2, one between lots 1 and 2, and one at the south of Lot 1. Southbound right turn lanes will be provided at each of those driveways and northbound lefts will be going in at the most southerly of the three driveways and the most northerly. The one in the middle will be only a ride-in, ride-out. Curbin gutter will be installed where there doesn't happen to be any, although it's mostly in. There will be some removal of curb and gutter and sidewalk, both for the installation of the right turn lanes that are required. In accordance with the Town of Garner Transportation Plan and the Recreation Plan in particular, this development will provide the multi-use path along the west side of Joan Sausage Road. So the fact that some of that sidewalk is coming out to do those turn lanes is not a complete, I want to say waste of resources, but we are going back and upgrading that as part of this to a multi-use path so that folks eventually will be able to access this employment area from neighborhoods to the south. Same thing, that it's consistent with the plan. Again, as I noted, a review of the Parks Rec and Cultural Resources Master Plan, we did have the recommendation for the Greenway side path, so that is now being accommodated and therefore will make the development in conformance with that master plan. And then in terms of site plan conformity with the UDO, after review and revisions, staff has found that this project, as proposed, may be considered consistent with the regulations of the UDO so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. We have a few things that happen to have to happen. I'm having a hard time tonight. I apologize. Prior to issuance of building permit, we have a few things that need to happen. One, landscaping plan for new material. We just want to be able to go over that one more time in the planning department, as Allison has been out some, just to ensure that the objective part of the criteria, the calculations and the numbers of plants are all correct. Nothing subjective, just a few. We want to run those numbers a couple more times, or one more time. Payment of engineering inspection fee shall be paid to the Town of Garner. A minor subdivision plot shall be approved and recorded. Payment of public utility fees to Raleigh and that nitrogen offset payment for stormwater that we discussed. So all that needs to happen prior to building permit. Then prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the stormwater control measures, the maintenance plan for those, and associated memorandum of agreement need to be approved and recorded with Wake County. And finally, construction drawing review and approval by the Engineering Department and City of Raleigh is required still for this development following what should be site plan approval. So there is one more step that they have to go through at the staff level as well for construction drawings. With that being said, we'll refer you to the motion worksheet beginning on page 121. The only thing that I will point out there is, as part of the 160D rewrite process, the number of special use permit criteria have been condensed from 10 to 8. We did not get rid of anything, but there was an opportunity where there was a little bit of repetition and a good opportunity to consolidate a couple. So instead of the 10 standard special use permit conditions, there's now eight. Very minor, but I believe the applicant will be addressing those as part of their presentation and I'll be glad to invite them up to give their report to you all. And otherwise, I am available to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. And yeah, so while you're there, I'm going to see if council has questions for you. I'll start on this side and see if Mr. Matthews has any questions.
Not this time, Mr. Mayor.
No, this time, okay. Mr. Sanglin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just to confirm, Jeff, southbound, all three driveways, there will be a southbound right turn lane in all three driveways with about 100 foot of storage, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and the left turn lanes will be, or where the crossovers are currently now?
That's correct, yeah, right here and then down here.
And the one in the middle there, in Building 1, that's just a ride-in, ride-out?
Yeah.
Okay, but all three again will have driveways into the entrances?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, yes, okay. Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Questions, comments? Mr. Dillinger?
A question on the status of the northernmost lot and what impacts, one, does it have to come back before us? Is it, okay. And are there any impacts on the decision tonight that impact that specifically?
No, they just asked for a grading-only type approval for that lot, which we've done for a few other lots in the jurisdiction before. So at this point, it's just preserving the buffers and then also the tree canopy so that that doesn't all come down at this time.
The lot that's adjacent to Calabar and, the one, the northern northernmost lot?
And that one's not being disturbed at all. Apart from putting in the sewer line.
And is any of this property subject to the I-40 overlay restrictions for non-adjacent properties?
It is. There's a couple of requirements in that overlay that apply to this parcel since it's not directly adjacent to I-40, but there are a couple of the new landscaping requirements for new material that goes in. And that's one of the reasons we want to just double-check those numbers one more time because they do have their own yard planting requirements for that, so, yeah.
That's all for now, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. I don't believe I have any questions this time. So we're going to hear from the applicant now, I suppose, or do you want to introduce those folks?
Yes, I can tell you, Ms. Isabel Maddox is here. She's the attorney representing the group and I'll let her, invite her up and have her introduce the rest of the folks, if that's okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Trezenberg.
I'll call on Greg Sandrueter to look it up.
Okay, you probably know the procedure. If you'll come to the podium, state your name and address first.
Thank you. And is the protocol, should I keep my mask on, sir?
While speaking, if you're more comfortable and sometimes we can hear you actually a little better with it off or down, I think that's permissible.
Terrific, great. Acceptable? Terrific, great. Thank you. Good evening, members of council. My name is Greg Sandrueter. I live at 104 Lake Cliff Court in Cary. I'm on the development team for this project. We have our entire team here to answer, to talk to you about some of the technicals on our project. And I'd like to just mention two items, if I could, please. Number one would be neighborhood communication, number two, just our schedule going forward if you so decide to approve our project. What we've done, as was mentioned earlier, our latest Zoom call with the Hunter's Mark neighborhood was in February. We had a prior call with them, so we've had two Zoom calls with them already. We believe we've created a communication system so all residents have a chance to communicate with us. Essentially, a listserv and folks can email questions anytime they'd like and respond promptly. We have done our best to assist residents when issues come up. We have done our best to assist residents when issues come up, even though not of our making. Mrs. Dunn is here this evening. We're delighted she's here. She's had some issues with some Amazon trucks parting on our side of Jones Sausage Road. We've worked with the town to try and resolve that. That's still an issue I think she'd like to talk about, but we've done our best to create a rapport and open two-way communication channel with neighbors. Mrs. Lipinski is also here this evening, which is terrific. And also, number two, just in terms of the project, we expect it to last about a year in construction. We don't yet have any users or tenants for it, but we have good activity, and we think the activity will pick up once we start. And we plan to maintain our two-way communication process with all residents, so whenever there's an issue they see, they can let us know, and we'll be quick to pick up on it. We know that in the past, other construction has caused some challenges for area net residents. We want our project to do a better job of responding to concerns and fixing problems faster, so that's a key focal point for ours. And we also plan to own these buildings long-term. We plan to not just treat them like a real estate development, but just our property, like we live in town. I'm a Cary resident, and so unfortunately, I'm not a Garner resident, but I'm awfully nearby, but we want to take care of these properties in a high-quality, Class A way so that you'll be proud of them and we'll be proud of them. That's really kind of one of the hallmarks of how we do business. And so with that, I'd like to introduce to you our land use attorney, Isabel Maddox, who will guide our presentation from here. Thank you.
Thank you, sure.
Thank you, Greg, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. Pleased to be here in Garner tonight. Here on behalf of applicant Hamilton Merritt and Beacon Development, prospective developer of JS Commerce Park.
Ma'am, could I fail to get your name, so if you don't mind?
Isabel Maddox.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
M-A-T-T-O-X.
That was stated, thank you.
My address is PO Box 946 Raleigh 27602. You met Mr. Sandrueter. Also here tonight is James Whitaker, civil engineer of Advanced Civil Design, Tom Hester, MAI and licensed real estate broker of Hester &amp; Company, Richard Adams, professional traffic engineer of Kimbley Horn, and I think remotely we have John Core and John Morris of Beacon Development on the line. I'm not positive, but they said they were going to be on. So this is the first site plan for this business park totaling over 300,000 feet on Jones Sausage Road, and because of the intensity of this building, the size of this building, it's required to come for you for special use site plan approval. The, I was just talking to Mr. Trezenberg, I was not aware that the findings had condensed to 8, and we went over those in the staff report. It actually went through the 10 that I was using, so, but I do think we'll address all the points that we need to address, and I don't think we actually even call them out by number. But I was just going to remind you that the standard tonight is whether or not we provide competent and material evidence that allow you to make a finding that we have satisfied these now eight standards. And they relate to, as you might expect, public health and safety, injuring the value of adjoining property, compliance with the UDO, the compatibility with the area in which it's located, consistency with the transportation plan and other relevant Town of Garner plans, compatible with adjacent uses in terms of building scale, site design, buffering, screening, operating characteristics, significant impacts from the use will be mitigated or offset, public safety, transportation, and utility facilities will be available to serve the use and also continue to serve well the surrounding development, and finally, the adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided. And on that last point, I will note that I think Mr. Sandrueter addressed that in his comments about his intent to continue to hold the properties and maintain those. So the staff report does confirm compliance with the UDO, but I do want to have our engineer, who has done the heavy lifting on the site plan, to come forward and testify. And the way I want to do this is, I want each of these experts to come forward and testify as to their subject matter, and I have an affidavit signed and notarized from each one of them, and I'll hand up to, I guess I'll hand them to the clerk unless, Madam Attorney, you want to see those. I can provide those to you.
Yes, please.
Okay. So with that, I will call James Whitaker, civil engineer, to speak.
James Whitaker, 51 Kilmain Drive, Cary, North Carolina 27511. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you. We were in front of you with the subdivision plan on this site, and it sounds like that might have been one of the last in-person meetings, and now we're back here for the first one, so it's good to be here. Mr. Trezenberg hit on a lot of these points as to how we do meet the requirements, so I'll try not to belabor them too much, but just running through quickly. I am a professional engineer and surveyor in the state of North Carolina. I have over 20 years' experience doing these type of projects, done over 200 projects in North Carolina throughout the country that are very similar to this type of site plan, have significant experience preparing and modifying site plans and meeting the different ordinances and regulations for various municipalities throughout North Carolina, including here in Garner. I was the engineer who prepared this special use site plan for buildings 1 and 2, and it is identified, just for the record, as SUP SP 2002. In my professional opinion, this project meets all the requirements for a special use site plan, and the site plan also complies with the applicable provisions in the UDO, including buffers, setbacks, utilities, road improvements, parking, lighting, outdoor operations, and stormwater, as Mr. Trezenberg said. Just specifically regarding buffering, we do have the 45-and-a-half-foot and 65-foot buffers all around the perimeter, and again, those are the shaded areas in the site plan. We worked hard with staff to make sure that we did preserve those and maintain those buffers to, you know, provide the required buffering to the adjacent properties. Our tree save areas, again, as Mr. Trezenberg mentioned, we meet those requirements, and we do have a 15-foot buffer along Jones Sausage Road, and then also, as we mentioned, the news buffer along the creek that runs through the property. Again, utilities will be provided by the City of Raleigh. Road improvements, as we already mentioned, we're going to be providing turn lanes. Richard Adams is here from Kimbley Horn and can get into any additional traffic concerns. They provided the traffic impact study for the project. Lighting, again, as we mentioned, they're all going to be cut-off fixtures. We're not going to have light pollution onto the adjacent properties. We'll have the warm color characteristics that the town requires. Parking, I don't know if we hit on that, but on Building 1, we're going to have 116 parking spaces. On Building 2, we have 110 parking spaces. Those meet the UDO requirements. We don't have specific users yet. If a user would come onboard that needs additional parking, then we'll work to add that parking. We're not going to have a user come onboard and not have enough parking for them. Operations, most operations will be inside the building. That'll limit the impact of noise and dust and odors to any adjacent properties. There may be some limited outdoor storage, as allowed under UDO, with forklift use. Forklifts are typically gas-powered and very quiet, and these areas will also be well-screened with generous buffers. Stormwater, we do meet all the requirements of the UDO, and as mentioned, there are two wet ponds on the site that will serve that purpose. The site plan is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of site design, buffering, and screening. This property is zoned and has been zoned for this use for quite some time. As far as the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan designates this parcel as an employment campus, which contemplates an employment center supporting commercial uses, including light manufacturing, assembly, distribution, warehousing, and offices, as we have proposed. Additionally, in the comprehensive plan, this is the northeast gateway to town and that the entrance way to Jones Sausage is an untapped resource due to its access to the interstate and proximity to major employers and distribution centers, and that the development area shall encourage the core industrial purpose, which, again, we feel like we're meeting that intent. As previously mentioned, the project is within the I-40 overlay district, and we've been working with staff to make sure that we meet any of those additional requirements that are part of that overlay. We touched on setbacks, and we meet all those setbacks, and with that, you know, we feel like we've met the standards that are required for conditional use site plan, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, well, I don't know what council's pleasure is. We could ask questions, I guess, after other presentations, or?
Let's ask him questions.
Okay, all right. Let council see what we want to ask, and I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Whitaker, looking at the parking spaces, whether on the site plan, which I know is not exact, but it appears that all the parking spaces at the front of Lot 1 and Lot, excuse me, Building 1 and Building 2 are smaller spaces for vehicles, cars, and for employees. The back of Building 1, longer spaces, probably for trucks, tractor trailers that come and bring supplies.
That's right.
With all the issues that we have learned the hard way from across the street, I will ask the council to consider a motion requiring that y'all put signage on the front banning any tractor-trailer cabs and/or trailers from parking in the front of those buildings 24 hours a day, because those people will park on an HVAC pad if they can find one. I'm serious. They'll park anywhere they can find it, and if we open that up, and unless you have security out there at night, and I doubt that's going to happen, they will pull in your parking lot and park. And I would just like us to consider, I'm just putting that out there right now, so I just want you to confirm on the size of the lots. What happens in the back is the back of the building that's the used building, we understand that, but they will pull inside the front there and park in a minute.
Within the auto parking is the concern?
Yes, they'll park anywhere they can find asphalt or concrete, or gravel or anything else that'll hold up their vehicle. So that's just something I'd like, they're going to ask us to consider because they'll park there. If we don't ask you to put signage yet, they'll park there.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, I'll go to Mr. Vance.
Yes, in reference to what Councilman Singleton said, I also agree with their recommendation based upon, I will say, the situation we currently have with tractor-trailers in an area that methods of prohibiting parking in authorized areas, whatever we can do, would like to move forward with that.
I don't, I think we'd be glad to do that. Like, we've seen the videos and pictures of the trucks parked along the road into the existing curb cuts that are there, and we've been working with the town to try to eliminate that and help that issue, so we continue to do that.
I'll go back to Mr. Matthews.
Not this time.
Okay, go back to Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, what's the extent of the improvements and realignments to Wilmington? I think Mr. Trezenberg had mentioned it'd be sort of a realignment of Calabar in the future, so I have a secondary question about Calabar and where it's going to be in terms of a town road or DOT, and that's another question. But how much work is going to be done on either or both sides of Wilmington, considering you own both sides of the road? What improvements are going to be done in Wilmington with this particular project?
So for these two buildings, that they're standalone buildings, they're not dependent on the Wilmington road realignment, so the only work associated with these two buildings would be the sewer line that comes north of Wilmington, you know, that Mr. Trezenberg pointed out, that will come and cross Wilmington. So the realignment of Wilmington, you know, that was reviewed during the subdivision process is still planned, but it's not necessary for these two buildings.
Would Wilmington be improved in the future as this northernmost 10.473 acre is developed? Or are there no planned improvements for Wilmington adjacent to this property at all?
I mean, Wilmington would be realigned, you know, with Calabar per the original development plan. You know, it's just not part of this particular site plan.
Okay. So there'll be no improvements on this side, I guess that's Lot 3 on this, there would be no improvements in this phase? Because that's just for grading? Is that what I'm understanding? Okay.
Yeah, on the remainder or Lot 3 that we're calling it, that would just be grading, and then that's why we provide those tree save areas to, so as a standalone lot without Wilmington road being relocated, it still meets UDO requirements.
James, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the cul- eventually as part of your future, I guess, phases, for lack of a better word, that cul- the cul-de-sac will be in about this general vicinity?
Yeah, approximately.
And then the rest of this will be abandoned.
And Calabar would cut down south or connect on the north? I seem to remember the previous iteration, it went straight across west. Is this a different alignment? Is this the same alignment to go south?
Yeah. So Calabar is up here right now, and it would continue and then turn.
Do, I don't know if they apply to this conversation.
Okay, so it wouldn't go south, it'd go back out to Wilmington? Okay, that's, I misread your pointer earlier. Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Behringer?
Yes, I'd just like to add to Mr. Singleton and Mr. Vance's remarks about the truck drivers. I'm sure you've heard from residents in Hunter's Mark that they having issues there, not just the trucks and the whole rig, but cabs only driving down in there and parking and sleeping, and that's not acceptable, so we just want to be sure that we don't back up on that at all.
Well, we completely agree. I mean, our tenants are not going to want trucks from across the street parking in their area as well, so.
But they'll do it because they sure will not ask for permission.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. I think our council has had a chance. Anybody need to follow up before we allow him to sit down? Okay, hearing none? We'll be happy to hear from your next witness. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, I would call Tom Hester, who will address the findings on property values and compatibility.
Hi, I'm Tom Hester. I'm a real estate appraiser. My office is, or my address is PO Box 6100 in Raleigh 27628. I'm a member of the Appraisal Institute, which is a national professional organization. I hold the MAI designation from the Appraisal Institute, also a state-certified general appraiser, so certified by the state of North Carolina, and I've got a North Carolina broker's license. And I've been an appraiser in Wake County for about 40 years, so I've seen a lot of growth and seen a lot of change, of course, as you have as well. So I have been asked to look at the property value issues from these two proposed buildings, and the, what I usually am doing is looking at what's the character of the neighborhood and what are the adjacent properties. And the adjacent properties on the south and on the west of these proposed buildings are, it's zoned R-40, and they're low-density, single-family residential properties. The thing about the site plan that is sort of protecting those properties, in my opinion, is the wide setback on the south side, then you've got a wide setback on the west side, and a lot of that west side is going to remain as natural area. So I think these buildings are pretty well buffered and sort of hidden from the adjacent properties. The other issue is the change in elevation. The building on the south, Lot 1, the elevation, the floor elevation of that building is about 20 feet below the elevation of the land on the south where the closest house is. So the combination of the setback, the distance, and the trees, and the elevation, I think that the building, I don't think it'll be completely hidden, but it's not going to be highly visible from the property that is adjacent. So those are the kinds of things that I look like, I look at, and I think the property on the west is buffered in the same way with the setbacks and with the wooded areas. I have looked at some recent sales data in the Hunter's Mark subdivision just to see sort of the change in values there over time with the development of the Amazon warehouse. I looked at all of the transactions at Hunter's Mark from the beginning of 2016 through the present. I did make a comparison, I looked, trying to look at sort of before Amazon, after Amazon. So I looked at the 2016 sales and the 2020 sales. The 2020 sales, average sales price is about 26% higher than the 2016 sales in the same subdivision. That's a pretty good annual appreciation. That's a, that's a pretty good annual appreciation, especially considering that there was road improvement and a pretty big development project going on. I also looked at all of the residential sales in the town of Garner, single family residential properties built since 2000, looked at the 2016 average sale price and the 2020 average sale price, it's about the same increase, about 26% increase. Now, every subdivision is different, they all are going to sort of ebb and flow based on specific characteristics, but I think that is a pretty good way to look at sort of the change in property values over time. Based on my analysis of those sales and considering the site plan and the adjacent properties and how any impacts on the adjacent property have been mitigated by the elements of the site plan, it's, it is my professional opinion that the proposed buildings will not substantially injure the value of adjacent or budding property. It's also my professional opinion that the proposed subdivision, the proposed buildings will be compatible with approximate area in which they'll be located. And that, one more thing, I, I mean, we've already talked about this, but it's, it is a, it is a property that is designated for industrial use, it's zoned for industrial and approved the industrial subdivision. So the expectation in the community would be that this will be an industrial project. There are a lot of other industrial type properties that are permitted other than a, than a warehouse, including auto service and ambulance service and recycling center and some other types of uses that I think would potentially be more, would have more, potentially more of an impact on the adjacent properties. So I think the way these buildings are laid out and the type of use that's anticipated, I think these are very well mitigated from having any damage or any effect on the adjacent properties. Be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. We'll see if council has questions. I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
Yes, sir, no questions.
None. Mr. Dellinger.
No questions.
And Mr. Vance.
Just a quick question, you made a statement will not substantially injure the value of adjacent property. Can you elaborate, go a little deeper on that, please?
Well, I think the, I think the nature of these particular buildings are not going to have any effect on the, on the adjacent properties.
Will not have any effect, in your opinion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Mr. Hester, just to confirm, you said that the floor, the elevation of Building 1, the floor would be approximately 20 feet below the houses to the south, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
None, sir.
None, okay. All right, I think that's all the questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Hester, for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Maddox?
I would like to call Richard Adams, professional traffic engineer from Kimley Horn, to speak about traffic and transportation issues.
Welcome, sir. Good to see you.
Good evening, thank you, glad to be here. Again, Richard Adams with Kimley Horn, 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh, and just to provide some information regarding the traffic and transportation for the proposed special use permit. I am a professional engineer here in North Carolina. I'm a principal with Kimley Horn and I've been practicing in the Triangle area for about 25 years now. I do have significant experience in analyzing traffic impacts across North Carolina and specifically here in the town of Garner. I have evaluated the special use permit, or the special use site plan, excuse me, for the proposed industrial development, specifically SUP SP 20-02 from a traffic perspective. It is my professional opinion that the subdivision plan and the special use site plan are consistent with the transportation plan for the town, other relevant adopted plans and policies, and the stated purpose and intent of the UDO. The subdivision plan for the larger development, which we've discussed a little bit tonight and was previously approved by council action, involves the realignment of Wilmington Road as was discussed and connection of Wilmington Road to Calabar Street, which is consistent and is contemplated in the count of Garner Transportation Plan. That new, future realignment of Wilmington Road and Calabar Street would be constructed as a town of Garner three lane major collector street with a 74-foot right-of-way. And again, as was mentioned previously, that's not contemplated as part of this special use permit, and I'll explain that a little further in a second. Traffic, as again, has already been discussed, will ingress and egress from the project from three driveways directly to and from Joan Sausage Road. One, as previously stated, will be a full movement signalized driveway, the signal's already there, put in as part of the Amazon development, another full movement driveway all the way to the south, and a right-in, right-out driveway kind of at the midpoint as shown on the screen there. The, the turn lanes, there will be, again, as previously discussed, turn lanes for all movements, some of those are already there and where they're not there, they will be installed by the applicant. All traffic generated by the site plan is expected to utilize these driveways to access the site and the Wilmington Road realignment is not required for the site plan for this specific SUP in order for the traffic to be fully functional. We did perform a traffic impact analysis for the project, I was the engineer of record on that. That impact analysis was reviewed and approved by the town of Garner and the North Carolina DOT and the access and improvements shown herein are consistent with the TIA. These improvements in access points will provide acceptable overall traffic safety and circulation conditions in the area. It's also my professional opinion that the project is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of trip generation. And more specifically to that, just for point of comparison, obviously this is an industrial development, will certainly generate some traffic and truck traffic, but for comparison purposes, the Amazon trip generation across the street, this would be about one-fifth the trip generation in the morning compared to Amazon and in the evening peak when we often have our biggest traffic challenges, it's one-tenth of the Amazon trip generation. So this is a much, much smaller development than what you have across the street. So in my professional opinion, the existing traffic, transportation network, together with the planned road improvements, will be sufficient to serve the project and the project will have minimal impact on the roadway network and will not interfere with public safety and transportation services available for the existing surrounding development. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Adams. Okay, I'll start with Mr. Dellinger this time.
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Behringer.
No questions.
Mr. Vance?
Um, no, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
And Ms. Matthews? Okay, looks like you passed this time, so thank you, sir, very much.
May I like to submit Mr. Adams' affidavit?
Okay.
Sorry? So in conclusion, yeah, we do have supports, reports to go along with the appraisers affidavit. Why don't you just hand those to our town attorney? We do believe we have presented substantial material in competent documentary and testimonial evidence which will allow you to make the required eight findings. We also want to make a note, we did, do agree with staff's proposed conditions which Mr. Trezenberg enumerated earlier, related to things that will come pre-building permit and pre-certificative occupancy, that they generally relate to various, you know, fees, plans and subsequent approvals needed, sort of routine matters, and we do agree to each of those. And with that, I'll conclude our presentation, but our, our whole team is available for further questions. Thank you.
Okay, while you're there, let me see if the panel, our council has any questions for you, Ms. Maddox? I don't know that they do, but Mr. Vance, any question for the attorney?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Ms. Behringer? Any here, Mr. Singleton?
Not right now. No.
All right.
Thank you.
Would any members like to review the affidavits? They, they basically correspond to the testimony you received, but they're available if any members of council would like to review them.
Okay, council, do you need a little time or are you satisfied if we can move on? So those are the witnesses for the applicant, is that correct? Are there any other persons here who were sworn in to testify at this, at this hearing? If so, if you would indicate it by raising your hand. Okay, seeing and hearing none, I believe we have covered all of the persons who wish to testify, so I believe it's proper for me to close the, okay, excuse me.
Can I ask Mr. Sandruhr a question?
Yeah, okay.
Since I spoke, mentioned in where Mr. Whitaker made his presentation regarding signage in the fronts of Buildings 1 and 2, you were, you were open to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jones, I believe it's proper for me to close the hearing at this point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, close the public hearing and I will at this time call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, regarding SUP, SP 20-02 JS Commerce Center, Building 1 and 2, I move that the council accept the staff recommendations regarding plan consistency in Section 5 of this report as our own and find the application meets the eight permit criteria in Section 3.14 D as in Delta and therefore approve SUP, SP 20-02 JS Commerce Center, Buildings 1 and 2, with three standard conditions and three site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
May I ask Mr. Matthews to amend his motion and change the three site-specific conditions to four?
Will do.
I will second that. And now we need to state that specific condition, right?
Yeah, I believe we do.
Mr. Attorney, is it okay if I state it?
Please, yeah.
As we request that the property owners at Buildings 1 and 2 have multiple signs in the front of the vehicle parking lot prohibiting tractor trailer cabs and/or tractor trailer, trailers to be parked in those areas and also requests that they have signs posted of a towing company so that if the Garner police go by there, they'll have the phone number of who to contact to come and tow those vehicles away. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney? Is that, okay?
I think we just want to clarify that it would be not for the owners or their tenants or invitees of, would not be prohibited, but I think your intent is that they would park in the rear and not be parked out front of the buildings.
Well, based off their parking lots, they're not made for tractor trailer cabs anyway.
So if we can just confirm that the applicant consents to that additional condition and under, my understanding is under the new 160D, we'll have to have the applicant verify that in writing and we'll work on that.
Okay.
When we, assuming that the motion passes and it's approved.
And I'll add a sentence to that condition stating that this does not involve any tractor trailers or cabs who are there during enormous business hours, doing business at those locations.
Okay, yeah, I'm seeing consent to that, yeah. Okay, and Mr. Matthews, since you made the motion, you consenting to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Council, I believe a motion is properly before us at this time, motion made and seconded to understand the fourth condition that Mr. Singleton just mentioned. So with that, unless you have a question of clarification, I'll ask for a vote. If you favor the motion as presented, please vote aye.
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 If there's opposition, please vote no, and I heard none, so I declare that the motion passes unanimously and it is so ordered. Thank you all for your, for your time and for your good presentation to the council. Hope to see you back at another time.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Okay, council, the next item before us is another public hearing, same comments provided earlier apply to this one. I guess I could ask again if there's been any ex parte communication or any of the other items mentioned as it relates to this particular SUP? If so, would you indicate now?
None.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right, I will call on Ms. Stacy Griffin, who will be the presenter on SUP SP 2004 and recognize others at a proper time. Ms. Griffin?
Good evening, this is, as you stated, SUP SP 2004 US 401 Assemblage Apartments. The applicant in this case is RST Development, the landowners are Scott Hoke and Jewel B. Christian. This is located at Fayetteville Road just north of 1010 Road and is just about 36 acres. This is for 479 multifamily apartments, up to 500 apartments were approved as part of the US 401 Assemblage Master Plan that was approved last year. This lot was created then and you have the setbacks there before you. The neighborhood meeting for this project was held August 6, 2020 as part of the larger PRD project. Also, after the planning commission meeting on the PRD project, Keith Roberts from the Timmins Group did also meet with a group of residents from the Brookwood subdivision to address some of their concerns on the PRD. There you see the site plan, the blue outline is just a phase line, that is Phase 2, this is divided into two phases. You see the amenity area and then the dog park and kiosk area as well as the stormwater device, which is also adjacent to residential lots you see there as part of the master You see the open space required and provided for each of the phases there before you. The required tree coverage preservation for the site is 12%. They're providing 13.9% using both existing and replacement plantings. There are perimeter buffers on the northern side of the property, part of it's a 35-foot buffer because it's against a residential lot that has a home on it and then part of it is a 25-foot buffer because it's a vacant parcel. There are street buffers along both 401, which is a seven and a half foot wide street buffer due to the 401 overlay, and then there's a 20-foot buffer along the entrance road to the development, which is referred to below as Road S. So street trees along 401, 26 are required and 26 are provided and that's doing those every 40 feet as required and along Road S, the entrance to subdivision, 51 are required and 54 are provided. The proposed lighting meets the requirements of the lighting ordinance as well as staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved the site plan. There you see the site before you, it does not contain floodplain or riparian buffers in that part of the apartments. For stormwater, the apartment site is subject to water quality requirements for nitrogen and 85% TSS removal as well as quantity requirements for the 1, 10 and 25-year storm events. This development plan proposes a wet retention pond to treat impervious surface from the development and this device will satisfy all water quality and quantity requirements. A nitrogen offset payment will also be required. This project will connect to the City of Raleigh Public Sanitary Sewer and Water System through the infrastructure that's being extended for the US 401 Assemblage Master Plan. For infrastructure, along the site frontage, US 401 will be improved to half the ultimate section, which is a six-lane median divided facility in 150 feet of right-of-way. Curb and gutter will not be installed along this frontage as the speed limit is 55 miles per hour. However, sidewalk will be constructed in the public right-of-way. The overall subdivision will have three access points off 401, right and left turn lanes and/or U-turn lanes will be provided for each driveway and the apartment site will have access off a public subdivision street, which is the Road S. S, and the northernmost driveway off of 401. The internal apartment site will be served by private infrastructure. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan calls for US 401 to be a six-lane divided section in the area bordering this project, and there are no bicycle, pedestrian, or greenway recommendations adjacent to the project site. Therefore, with completion of half the ultimate section, which is the six-lane divided section, these plans may be considered consistent with the recommendation of the 2018 Transportation Plan. A review of Parks and Rec Open Space and Greenways Master Plan, um, the Parks and Rec and Cultural Resources Department did opt for a fee in lieu of Parkland dedication for this project. After sufficient review and plan revisions, staff finds that this project, as now proposed, may be considered consistent with the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance, so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid to the Town of Garner. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a subdivision plot shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. Prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of public utility fees shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. Prior to issuance of a building permit, the nitrogen offset payment is required. Prior to certificate of occupancy, the Stormwater Control Measures Maintenance Plan and Associated Memorandum of Agreement shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. Prior to City of Raleigh Public Utility Staff's signature on this site plan, construction drawings to bring water and sewer to the site must be reviewed and approved, and any necessary plots required to dedicate easements and create the lot for the apartment site must be approved and recorded. That in particular was a condition that the City of Raleigh asked for during review of this, to ensure that the timing works out with the master plan and this apartment site plan. They didn't want to get this too far down the road before the infrastructure was in place and, and everything was recorded as needed for the subdivision. And also, construction drawing, review, and approval by the Engineering Department and City of Raleigh is required. I'll be happy to answer any questions I can. The applicant is also here, um, to answer any questions, and I think they have a short presentation as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Griffin. Um, I'll start with, uh, Ms. Behringer again, if she has questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
No.
Mr. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Matthews?
No, this time.
Mr. Van.
This time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Griffin, thank you very much. Uh, will you be introducing the next person, or they can introduce themselves perhaps?
Yes. I thought Keith was going to speak, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Marshburn.
Good evening.
Mayor President Behringer and members of the town council. My name is Neil Gauch. I am an attorney with the Morning Star Law Group, uh, at 112 West Main Street in Durham, and I'm here tonight to present evidence on behalf of the applicant in support of its application for site plan approval for a residential multifamily community with a total of four hundred and seventy-nine homes. The property is about thirty-six acres in size and is Zon PRDC 11. It is on the east side of 401, south of Oak Ridge Court, and you all approved the zoning for this property in September of last year, so you're probably familiar with the project. A little bit different from the last presentation, uh, just for ease, for speed, I'm going to address all of the points. We do have our expert witnesses available, and I'll introduce you to them. Uh, but the plan before you tonight will implement the multifamily portion of the rezoning you all approved in September. And just to refresh your memory, that zoning would allow for a maximum of five hundred apartments. This plan proposes four hundred and seventy-nine units over two phases. Given that many of the findings that you all must make in order to approve the plan before you tonight overlap with the items you considered months ago when you approved the rezoning, I'm going to touch briefly upon each of the findings myself to demonstrate that the proposed plan meets all the requirements for approval set forth in the UDO. That having been said, we do have our expert witnesses and other team members lined up to answer your questions or give more in-depth feedback on any finding you all would like to discuss further. If you do have concerns, uh, about any given factor, we just ask that you give us an opportunity to answer your questions and satisfy your concern to demonstrate that the project meets the standard before you vote tonight. Uh, just by way of introduction, thought it might be helpful for me to introduce you to our team. We have Mr. Tim Gressinger?
Gressinger.
Gressinger and Ms. Beth Blackman, the project managers from the, uh, from, for the project from the Timmins Group. Jeff Hoconodle?
You know him?
They're killing me with these last names, man. Uh, the projects engineer from Timmins. Um, with us virtually is Jeff, that's another hard last name, Zataukey? Zataukey? He's a real estate appraiser, and we also have Mr. Scott Copeland, uh, who is with the applicant group, and you've got to find people with easier last names, man. Um, so, uh, if you need to hear from them directly, I'm sure you'll be satisfied with their bona fides as an expert in his or her field, uh, which they'll present if you, if you do want to hear from them. Uh, the staff report and application materials include the site plan and TIA, which were created by our experts. Um, if now is the appropriate time, Madam Attorney, I also would like to put into evidence the real estate appraisal report. Um, I've got ten paper copies here. Thought it might be better to do that now, as we, at the beginning, in case anyone wants to review that.
Correct.
And I'll just give you a moment to pass those out. Did I do it right? Yeah, just now. Perfect. So, and if this is the appropriate time, I would like to ask, um, to move into evidence for the record, all the materials relied upon by our witnesses, including the staff report, all of its exhibits, attachments, our site plan, our application materials, our experts' plans and reports. Um, and I would also ask that judicial notice be taken with regard to the contents of the UDO, the Conference of Plan, and other plans adopted by the town. Uh, for ease, I think I'll go through the findings one by one. The first would be public health and safety. The proposed project is implementing the multifamily phase of the larger 401 PRD. Every aspect of the development is governed first by the specific PRD zoning, and then also by the town's general development standards. As you all know, the UDO requires all new development to implement certain environmental controls, safety measures, and things like that. Moreover, per the approved PRD, this project is required to provide, uh, commercial strength aluminum fencing around stormwater control measures for an added layer of protection. By adhering to the high standards of development already required in the UDO and the additional precautions committed to as part of the PRD, the site plan before you tonight demonstrates that the public health and safety is not compromised. Property values, our appraiser has submitted a statement or report, rather, regarding the likely impact this project will have on surrounding property values. As an initial matter, it is important to understand that the greatest impact to property values in this area is the existence of 401. Unlike single-family homes, frontage along well-traveled thoroughfares is a positive for multifamily because it provides the level of visibility needed for the ultimate success of the community. As situated within this PRD, the multifamily in large part acts as a buffer to the single-family homes that will be developed in the future, and moreover, the multifamily community serves as an appropriate transition between the busy highway and the future of single-family homes. In that regard, the project is not expected to have a negative impact on the value of a budding or adjacent properties as outlined by our appraiser in his, in his report, uh, where he did a match pairs analysis of similar, uh, similar multifamily communities. The next two findings deal with compliance with the UDO. Uh, I think it goes without saying, but the plans before you tonight do comply with relevant portions of the UDO, and you don't have to take my word for it. Town staff has reviewed this plan through multiple rounds for compliance with the UDO. I suspect that if the plans were not compliant, staff would not even have scheduled this hearing. Um, but regardless, the site plan does demonstrate compliance with the UDO. The next three findings deal with compatibility in some shape or form. First, let's talk about compatibility with the surrounding area. The surrounding area is residential in nature, as is the proposed use. While the proposed use is denser, uh, the site plan demonstrates that buildings are placed more towards the middle of the property than out, than on the outsides, and that adequate buffers have been provided around the perimeter of the project. And though it is denser, it is still residential. Like any residential, uh, area, most multifamily residents are going to leave for work, for example, at the same time as any other residential community, um, and come back at night the same way. The pattern of use in a multifamily development is not much different than other residential areas in that regard. Additionally, the plan before you tonight is consistent with the UDO, the Garner Forward Plan, and other plans adopted by the town relevant to the project. Um, I suspect you all know that because in September, when you voted for this case, you did adopt a consistency statement that said pretty much the same thing. Uh, moreover, the plan is also consistent with the transportation plan, so basically, the plan before you tonight does check all the boxes with respect to consistency and compatibility with all the town's adopted plans. Uh, while the overall zoning semblance contains wetland areas, creeks, a new riparian buffer, uh, this portion of the, of the development is not near any of those areas. Uh, regardless, protecting the natural environment is very important, which is why the UDO mandates certain standards to be followed with new development. There are requirements not only for the ultimate development, but also during construction. Uh, for example, the plan before you shows provisions for tree protection fencing, uh, around the limits of disturbance for the project for the duration of the construction activities. Uh, that, that again shows compliance with the town's standards. And though it's not readily apparent on this plan alone, it's important to understand that by clustering the more intense portion of the development in this area, the less dense housing that will be developed in the future can be positioned around the more environmentally sensitive areas with more flexibility. Overall, the plan before you tonight provides adequate protections and provisions to mitigate or offset the externalities of this project. Uh, provisions of service, you might recall that at the time of the rezoning, the project required a TIA to be conducted. The TIA recommended four specific road improvements. Generally speaking, those include improvements at each entrance, uh, for the overall community and a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot U-turn lane. These road improvements represent a significant investment in the public infrastructure, and though this is just one phase of the development, um, the road improvements are required prior to getting a CO for the project. So this ensures that the traffic infrastructure will be in place and operable before residents begin to move in. Uh, and so that ultimately will allow the town to maintain a sufficient level of service at every stage of the project. Moreover, the site plan has been reviewed by the emergency services departments, which have signed off on the plans. Uh, this means that internal circulation has been designed with adequate width and radii to allow, uh, to accommodate even the largest emergency service vehicles should they be needed. There is adequate capacity from City of Raleigh for water and sewer as well, so the plans before you ensure the town's ability to continue to serve existing town residents at, at adequate levels with municipal services. And finally, continuing maintenance, uh, is the last review factor. I imagine this is more of a concern for townhome and single-family residents, but, um, this, as a multifamily community, this project certainly meets the standard. Uh, it has a very attractive amenity package, which you can see, the amenities and common areas are maintained by the operator of the, of the community, so by no means are residents expected to maintain themselves, those, those amenities and common areas, and that's no different than most other multifamily communities. So, at this point, I have addressed each finding you all must make in some detail, but as I mentioned, we do have our team with us to answer any questions about any of the specific findings yet you might have. Uh, they can answer them in more detail. We're happy to, to, uh, hear your questions, concerns, comments at this time.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, and I will see if counsel at this time wants to address any questions to you, since you've covered the entire spectrum of the project. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Vance?
Questions?
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
I wanted to ask a question about the appraisal. I can, we can wait till he comes up and speaks, correct?
So, he's available, uh, virtually, the appraisal, right?
Okay, yeah.
He's available virtually, so, I mean, I think now would be appropriate time. I, I can also speak to the appraisal, uh, the appraisal report as well, but I think now would be appropriate time to ask the question.
Okay. Question, I glanced through it, saw, uh, where compared to recently, two nearby communities that had been, uh, completed, picked the one in Fuquay, completed in 2013, and Treeline Timber formally evolved 2018 in Garner. Just noting, uh, the first sentence states what, what the Village of Marquee community has masonry construction and is three stories high, and then Treeline Timber, uh, built in 2018, the community has masonry construction and is three stories high. But since we don't have any specifics on here, I'm assuming that this project is going to be, have masonry construction and be at least three stories high, just to compare something similar.
Yes, that's correct. That's exactly, yeah, that's exactly right.
So they'll be three stories high, or will they be even higher?
They're three stories high.
There's a one-four story.
Yeah, there's one-four-story building.
One-four-story building, and three stories high, and masonry construction.
Yes.
So it's comparable to the ones that he did in the analysis?
And that was the intent, yes.
Okay, so I wanted to find out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Let's see, Ms. Behringer, have I given you a chance? Mr. Dellinger?
Do you have a question? On my place. So this project is part of a larger development?
Right, so there's, there's a larger rezoning, yeah.
Yeah, so my question, I made questions about this the first time it came up because it is a very large development, and I'm curious about the connections, the pedestrian connections within the development, so that folks who live in this particular part in the apartments can access those commercial areas to the south without necessarily have to get, having to get into a car. Then, and what are the sort of pedestrian internal, because one of the main features of a planned development, master plan, according to our UDO, is a continuous pedestrian circulation system. So my question is, how does this fit into a larger pedestrian circulation system of this development, so that this, these folks have access to the rest of that network?
Sure. Tamara? Beth can come up to answer that. I will say that the internal pedestrian network for, I mean, this is just the multifamily side, is meant to provide that, that circulation, you know, through the multifamily development, but I think your question is a little beyond the scope of, of that development, right? You're asking about the overall development and how this will allow connection to the rest of the PRD. Is that right?
Yeah, and to your other point about the, I mean, actually, the pedestrian network that's outlined in this specific development doesn't give access to that pedestrian network to the predominant number of apartments within the development. So that gives me concern too, but that's the second question. I'll take the first connected question first.
Beth Blackman with Timmins Group, 113 Lager Lane, Garner. I'll make sure I got all the question right. So internally, uh, Ms. Griffin, can you put the site plan back up? The rendering, we have an internal network of sidewalks and, uh, a trail network around the pond runs along the north side of that plant.
Do you want me to do the site plan? Would that show better, or are you good with the...
Honestly, don't know, because that, you can sort of see the trail going around the pond, uh, the pathway with line with bushes, yeah. And then, there are sidewalk connections to the neighborhood street and to the 401 sidewalk that would then connect you to the overall remainder of the PRD, which also has trail networks in addition to the sidewalk networks. Now, at this time, there is nowhere external to the PRD, the master plan area, that these sidewalks go. So currently, you cannot walk down 401 because there isn't anything from this site, and there's a gap until you get to McCullar's area.
Is it possible to navigate without getting on 401, through the subdivision, down through to get to those commercial areas without getting into a car? I mean, it's a huge, it's a huge project.
So you can navigate without getting in a car through the entire master plan area?
On sidewalks?
On sidewalks or the trails in the subdivision section. Uh, and then, like I said, the apartment section has some trails, which you can see on that site plan, um, going around the pond and, um, connecting out to the sidewalk lower down with Road S, right? And, but currently, there is a, there's, this subdivision does not go all the way to McCullar's, so there is no connection from this entire master plan area to where the food line and the Smithfield and stuff is. So there's a gap right now.
Can you point out it here, because maybe it just doesn't show up in the site plan? How, where's this continuous pedestrian circulation system? How, where's this continuous pedestrian circulation system that serves this whole multifamily site plan?
Also, all the streets have sidewalks on them.
Okay. All the internal ones?
All the internal ones.
Okay.
And then they connect to the subdivision streets, which also have sidewalks on them.
And they connect to the pond, right?
And they connect to the trail that surrounds the pond. And then there's, not shown on this page, there's additional trails in other natural areas.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, did I get to you, Mr. Vance? I don't think I did.
Can I ask Miss Blackman a quick question off that?
Go ahead.
The entrance there, right, to the south of what is shown on the site plan is one of the main roads in, and that has, it looks to me like has sidewalks on both sides of the road. Is that correct?
That is correct. So that's Road S that is the entrance to the neighborhood. It's a collector's street, so collector's streets have sidewalks on both sides. And then in your townhome section, those streets also have sidewalks on both sides. But Road S connects with another road in the subdivision, and that would continue to have sidewalks on both sides, all the way back out to the other 401 entrance that's south.
Further south, okay. I thought that's what it showed. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay. Phil, I don't think I recognize you yet. And Ms. Behring, you're, okay. All right, I think that's all the questions here. I think the attorney offered up any of the expert witnesses, if you wanted to hear from him, he's obviously given you the overview. So council satisfied at this point? You want to hear from any of the others? I'm sorry?
You're good.
Okay. Yeah, okay. All right. So at this point then, is that, those are all the witnesses for the applicant, is that right?
Unless you all would like to hear from anyone, then we are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Yeah, but I've heard the council is satisfied with your presentation, doesn't desire to hear from anyone else. Is there anyone else here who has been sworn in that wanted to testify in this case? So would you indicate it by raising your hand? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, then I believe I am ready to close this public hearing, and I call for a motion. You have the information presented, and a motion is now in order.
Mr. Mayor, regarding SUP-SP-20-04, the U.S. 401 Assemblage Departments, who the council stepped the staff statements regarding planning consistency in Section 5, this report as our own, and found the application meets the eight permit criteria in Section 3.14. D, and therefore approve SUP-SP-20-04, U.S. 401 Assemblage Departments, with the seven conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton, and seconded by either Ms. Behring or Mr. Matthews at the same time, okay. Okay, motion properly before us. Any question before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
There is none. Okay, so the motion is approved, and thank you all for your time and for the excellent presentation. Thank you. Good seeing, Mr. Roberts. Okay. Okay, I'm going to move right on to the next items under new and old business. And I believe with Mr. Dellinger's request, pull this off the consent agenda, maybe we were going to make this number one, is that right? We can, we can hear that at this time, I believe. So I believe Mr. Suckler is here. Request was made to bring this to the public forum here, Mr. Suckler, and I guess I could recognize Mr. Dellinger. All of you, by the way, have received the sheet that Mr. Suckler provided as it relates to the poll, is that right? Everybody have this? Okay. Okay, Mr. Dellinger, I recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you getting the information back to us after our work session. And I saw that there was a kind of a poll done of some staff who were on the choice plan, and nine out of the 14 responded.
Correct.
And that three would have, would keep the plan that we have, and six would opt for the new version, the recommended version.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And while that, on the surface, sounds like a strong support for the new, it does give me pause, because those individuals who would have kept the plan we have clearly looked at those deductibles and saw that it would be potentially detrimental or to their particular situation, and that if they were only offered the recommended plan, they foresaw possibly much higher out-of-pocket healthcare costs. And so I bring that, just, I had that concern at the work session, and I think, again, the choice is not really between the traditional and the choice, it's between the two different choice options.
That's right.
And the difference between those is not insignificant, but not huge. It's maybe $90, $80 or $90 a month, so. So I bring it, I wanted to bring that out and bring it to council just to discuss again. This is helpful information, and my personal opinion and feeling is that if there are staff members who are in need of having to keep the healthcare plan as is, to preserve the, you know, financial stability of their household, I think we should be sensitive to that, even if it's a slight detriment to some others. So I'll, I'll close my comments with that, Mr. Mayor, and throw it back to the, to the group for discussion.
Okay, before I recognize other council members, is there anything further you wanted to add at this point, Mr. Suckler?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Nothing further to add.
So I'm sure council remembers the discussion we had, and the agreement was to put this on the consent agenda. And Mr. Dellinger's reservations are noted. And so I will ask council if you, at this point, want to comment either on Mr. Dellinger's concerns and/or the information that you have in front of you at this time. We are asked to, to approve the recommendation. That's a key matter that's still before. So I'll start with Mr. Vance, if he has any questions, comments.
No questions at this time.
Okay, Ms. Behring. Okay, on this side over here, Mr. Matthews?
None, sir. No questions, it's just, the alternative, the new recommendation is 15% less than the current choice.
The, the cost of the new recommendation for the staff member in terms of his or her premium payment would be 20, 20.5% less.
So this is?
It would be 15 netted out between.
15.
Yep.
This is above 9.5, so 15 net.
5.5 in the current, next year.
But a total of 20 and a half.
That's right. Netted out at 15.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. Okay, anybody have any other questions, comments? Okay, I believe it's proper at this time to ask the council to vote on the original proposal that was to whether or not to approve the staff's recommendation for FY2122 employee benefits. Is that right, Mr. Suckler?
It is correct, Mayor.
Okay. And Mr. Dellinger, you've had your opportunity to, to express your thoughts and concerns. So I believe a motion is in order at this point in time for council to determine if you're ready to accept the staff's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the staff recommendation for the current recommendation for FY2122 Choice Plan Option Poll. Oops, I saw it. I recommend that we, that we approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, motion's made, properly seconded. Everybody understands what we're voting on, have adequate information in front of you, right? Okay, call for the, for the vote. If you approve, if you approve the staff's recommendation, as information presented previously, and what added information is before you tonight, please vote aye.
Aye.
If you disapprove and prefer something else, vote no. Okay. So thank you for the explanation, Mr. Dellinger. Your concerns are noted there, so motion passes, and so, Mr. Suckler, you can, you can act accordingly.
Great. Mayor, thank you. Members of council, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir, for being here. Okay, item, let me get back over to my right page here. Let me see here. Item two, I believe I saw Mr. Bridges here. Mr. Bridges, we'll recognize you at this point for.
Mr. Mayor, I think according to the agenda, we have some things out of order there. The next item would be the Meadowbrook and Jurgen, and it actually starts on page 141. We got those flip-flop.
Okay. All right, let me see, is that led by?
It doesn't matter what order we go in, it's good. But if he, if you want to go ahead and have Mr. Bridges go, that's fine. I just wanted to note that it was different order.
Okay. Well, come on up, Mr. Bridges.
Did we put that on there? Ah. How about we let, go, and then we'll get this power point loaded up. Yeah, yeah. It shouldn't take too long.
Okay, thank you for your indulgence, sir. We'll recognize Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Roy Lance, contract approval for construction drawings, Meadowbrook, and Jurgen. You've seen, you've seen this before, but yeah.
Yeah, yes, we're getting familiar with it, and it's exciting to have two big park projects underway, or at least the planning for them underway. Thank you very much. Before I get started, I also want to recognize some other folks that we have in the audience with us tonight. We have Rachel, thank you, Rachel Cotter and Shweta Nanak from McAdams, and then Megan Young from the park staff. So all of us are here to answer any questions that you might have. I'll run through the, the presentation, and then if we want to drill down into it, I might call for them to come up and assist me here at the podium tonight.
Okay.
Want to talk to you a little bit more about the, the next phase of the planning work for the Meadowbrook and Jurgen Park projects. As you all know, we've been doing some master planning work, and that, that work is nearing completion, or it's still in a draft phase, but, and there'll be another touch point with council before we wrap that up. But because that phase of the work is getting close to completion, and we know that we want to move forward in some fashion on both of these parks as a featured part of our bond that we're planning for November, we, we do want to keep moving forward with the planning work so that you all can have better information about cost estimates at a more detailed level and can have a conversation about how you might phase in the work at these parks, because the, the two of them combined are, you know, preliminary estimates would put it in somewhere in the $50 million neighborhood as, as currently conceived, and so you all might choose to, you know, focus on one park more than the other, or do some phased work at both parks. And in order to have that conversation, we need to get into a little bit more detailed next phase of work. And so that's what we're here tonight to explain to you. The Meadowbrook portion of the project, or the next phase, the 30% construction drawing phase, as you can see, totals about $291,000, and you can see how it's broken down here. There's a significant chunk for survey and geotechnical work, the, you know, boundary surveys, topographic surveys, wetland delineations, all, you know, all that sort of thing. Then, of course, there's the engineering and architecture work, you know, structural engineering, mechanical engineering, that kind of thing. You know, thinking ahead about how we would get into detail on the renovation of the buildings and/or any new buildings that would be on the property at Meadowbrook. All the civil and landscape architecture, and then we wanted to make sure that we had plenty of money and time dedicated in the project towards cost estimating at a more detailed level, and also being able to sit down and talk to you all about what phasing options might look like. And so when you add all that up, it comes up to about $291,000, which is a lot of money. But then again, when you think of it in the context of the tens of millions of dollars that these parks are going to cost to build, it's, you know, about what you would expect. It's typical, as a sort of a percentage basis of the overall project cost. Similar to Meadowbrook, we have, the same basic premise exists for Jurgen. So a little bit more money, in part because there's really two things that are a little bit different here that you see in the bullet list. One is historical survey. We've done some historical work already at Meadowbrook, and there's, of course, there's significant historical elements to that park property. We know there's some history at the Jurgen site as well, but we haven't dug into that quite as much, and we think it would be better to go ahead and do that work now on the front end, so we have an understanding of how it would impact us. More than likely, that impact would be much smaller than it is at Meadowbrook. It'd probably be more like the, the structures, you know, the house, specifically, the two houses specifically. But until we get into that a little bit further, we won't know for certain, so we'd like to spend a little bit of money investigating that. And the other thing is, because Jurgen will be more athletic-focused, we have some money in there to work with somebody who is an expert at designing athletic fields specifically. And so that's just an element of the overall planning and design that would go into these. So that total is about $341,000. In terms of the, the schedule, we are cognizant of the fact that the bond is coming up, and we need to have this information in a timely manner to, you know, explain to the public what we're talking about doing here and make some decisions about the phasing. But we also, you know, you've got to allow a certain amount of time, because there's a lot of work here to be done. So we'll get started as soon as possible, and, you know, likely it'd be in July before we'd be ready to come back to you all with a discussion about phasing, and have you all give us some guidance on what the options might look like and what option you would prefer. And then we can try to wrap everything up in August. That's a pretty aggressive schedule, given the amount of work, but we're trying to give you all as much time as possible to be able to communicate, well, all of us, frankly, enough time to communicate to the, to the residents what the bond program will, will be paying for as it relates to these parks. So finally, just, you know, totaling up, we're at about $633,000. We would suggest using Parks Fee and Lue funding to pay for it. We have a significant amount in the balance there, and we could potentially just use that as the ultimate source to pay for it. That's, I mean, that's what that money is there for, is to do things like this. We also, though, would have the option to reimburse ourselves later out of bond funds if the bonds were to be approved. And we don't have to make that decision right now. Mr. Beck, our finance director, has made sure that we have the reimbursement resolution in place, that we give us the flexibility to do that if, if we decide in the future. But for the moment, we would recommend paying for that with the Parks Fee and Lue money. So again, we're just asking for your approval, and whatever decision you make tonight will be, assuming you are interested in moving forward, there'll be a budget amendment to follow at another meeting that will just clean up the money based on whatever decision you make tonight. So that's it. Happy to answer any questions. And again, we have staff from McAdams and, and our own staff as well to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Roy Lance, and we'll recognize you a little further later on probably, but Ms. Behring, I'll start with you if you have questions. Okay, Mr. Singleton? Okay. I'll give Mr. Matthew, Mr. Dellinger, and Mr. Vance. So no one else was presenting on this necessarily unless we had other questions, right?
That's right.
So the item before us is to consider approving contracts with McAdams totaling $633,493 for the 30% level construction drawings. And so a motion is in order at this time, I believe.
Mayor, I move that we consider approving the contracts with, excuse me, I move that we approve the contracts with McAdams totaling $633,493 for 30% construction drawings.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. Ready to vote, council? Okay, if you approve the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
No? Okay, thank you, council, and thank you, Mr. Roy Lance.
Thank you very much.
I think everybody's excited about these parks. They are costing money, but that's, that's what parks do to start with anyway. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are we? Are we ready for the lobbyist report at this time, or should we go to another item?
Yes, we got to pull up. Couple of things shouldn't take but a moment.
Okay. Going to recognize Mr. Sam Bridges, known to all, and he has a report to give to us tonight.
I guess while we're pulling that up, I want to make sure that you got the information that was handed to you by the clerk. Should be at your desk. Should be a February and a March lobbyist report. We should have both of those.
I have it.
For information.
It's somewhat voluminous, but yeah, we have it.
They have copies of this.
Okay.
The basketball game starts in about 20 minutes, right?
30 minutes. Tip-off at 9:20. That's ridiculous. Gosh.
We know any rest plays.
That's insane. 9:20. I'd have 8:20.
All those folks can complain that too much of the stuff is Eastern Standard Time, and all those folks on the West Coast say it's big summer. Yeah. Right. Oh, Mr. Manager, did Mr. Roy Lance leave, or is he just?
Oh, he's coming back. He probably went to speak to the council.
Okay, yeah, I believe he did. Yes, thank you. Mr. Manager, the mayor's going to go on record that I believe we need to have someone adjust our clock in the back of the chamber. I believe it's still on the old time. Am I right on that? Okay. You don't have to do it right this minute necessarily.
Not working somewhere.
Those clocks are supposed to adjust themselves. I don't think so. Not that clock.
Not that one, no.
Not that one. That's not a time.
You ready, Mr. Bridges?
I'm ready, I think. So, I have a PowerPoint for you tonight. It's all pictures, so you'll really like it. So, what I wanted to do is, since we have all, you know, been Zoom meeting and not being able to go out a whole lot, there are some new folks on the county commissioners and the school board that you may or may not know. Just wanted to reintroduce you to them and tell you a little bit about them, and I'll show you their pictures, and we'll see who you can guess. You know, y'all know who that is? Monika Johnson-Hosler, our school board member. She was re-elected again in November. How about these two?
Keith Sutton and...
That's right. Keith Sutton, who's the chair, and Lindsey Mahaffey is now the vice chair of the school board. All right. These are longtime school board members.
Roxy Cash, Michael, that, and...
That's Ms. Kushner on the left.
Kushner on the left.
So, yeah, Christine Kushner is on the left. She's from the Broughton District. Roxy Cash is from the Millbrook District, and Jim Martin is from Athens Drive District. All right, now, these are some of the, this is the only picture I could find that also included Monika and Lindsey, but there's, these are the three other fairly new school board members. Do you might want to take a guess? So...
How good is Mr. Dellinger? I thought he would have popped them right out on Twitter.
Anyway.
Yeah, what's up with that? I thought he'd pop them right out.
So, Heather Scott is on the left. She's from the, her district is Wake Forest down to Wendell and Knightdale and Zabulin. In the middle is Chris Hagerty. And on the right is Karen Carter. Well, I've got a good map for us to look at to clarify the districts. I think Mr. Hodges helped me with that. These are our Wake County, two of our Wake County commissioners. Y'all recognize Mr. Calabria is now the chair, and on the left is Vicki Adamson, who is the vice chair. And Matthews, of course, will do. Mr. West, you were there when he was there, weren't you? And Susan Evans was formerly in the middle, formerly on the school board, is now the commissioners. And y'all know Sig Hutchinson. These are the two new ones, just elected in November. Shanika Thomas up top, and Maria Servanya on bottom. Y'all know, these are our House members. Y'all know Rosa Gill. If y'all don't know, she used to teach at Garner High School a long time ago, and she was a former school board member.
Thought it Garner High School, and me and Mr. Bridges were there together.
And the second House member is Julie Von Hayfen. She has the outskirts, this kind of the southern outskirts, Ran Road, Eagle Ridge, that area of Garner now. But mostly, she has Apex and southwest of here. Our Senate members, y'all recognize Dan Blue, of course. And on the top is our new state senator who represents the outskirts, the same part of town, Ran Road and Eagle Ridge, is Sidney Batch. Senator Batch was a representative from the Puket area, and she was defeated in the November election. And when Sam Cersey resigned, our previous senator, she was appointed. So, these are our new folks. That's it. Think we can figure out that map? Okay, so, if, yeah, if y'all can, I don't know how well y'all can see this, but this is on the county commissioner's website, and it's the best map tool that I have found to show where all these districts are. And of course, y'all have a good idea where they are, but let's see if we can see the House districts pop up. Y'all see them pretty well? So, Ms. Gill is in House 33. Julie Von Hayfen is in House 36. So, those are the two that are pertinent to Garner. It's pretty good, isn't it? I've looked for State Board of Elections website, Wake Board of Elections website, and I just found this tool this week. This is the best one I've seen.
Was Mr. Darren Jackson formerly, he had at least a portion of Garner. Was that district just redrawn? Is that the reason he's no?
Ms. Behringer?
No, 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 I'm sorry. Darren Jackson.
Yeah, so Darren was appointed to the Court of Appeals.
Well, excuse me, yeah, I meant to say before then, but that's okay.
Yes, he appointed, he was appointed to the Court of Appeals, and let's go back.
He was just in 36, wasn't he? I mean, 39.
I would expect he was 39.
39, yeah.
And of course, now, there's been a mayor appointed to that district.
Yeah, James Robertson, right.
James Robertson from Knightdale.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's go look at the Senate districts. So, Senate 14 is Dan Blue. Sidney Batch represents 17. Okay. Now, Board of Commissioner districts. Mr. Matthews, you'll know those well, and ours, of course, is Commissioner 2. Most of Garner is in Commissioner 2. Ms. Behringer, I believe your county commissioner representative is Mr. West, Commissioner 5, in District 5. And let's look back at that for a second. So, Mr. Hutchinson is District 1. Of course, Mr. Calabria, District 2. Ms. Servanya, the new lady, is from the 3rd District over in the west. Ms. Evans is from District 4. Mr. West, of course, District 5. Ms. Thomas, the new lady from District 6. And Ms. Adamson from District 7. Who board districts? So, Monika, of course, from District 2. Ms. Scott from District 1. Ms. Cash, the Millbrook District, is District 3. I call it Millbrook District because that high school is one of the ways of identifying. That's one of her responsibilities. Mr. Sutton is from District 4. East Raleigh. Mr. Martin from District 5. Ms. Kushner, call it the Broughton District, District 6. And Mr. Hagerty, District 7. Ms. Mahaffey, District 8. And Ms. Carter, the brand-new one, District 9. Okay. Now, there are two congressional districts. Ms. Ross, of course, has two. She covers most of Wake County. Let's get the judges. Anyway, that's the best map that I've found. So, I, included in your packet is our proposed legislative agenda and your, and my lobbying journals. Just want to highlight a few things. Mr. Dickerson and Ms. Mayor Marshburn, we worked on putting this together. What you'll want to know about what's going on downtown is is that there is a revenue surplus this year coming, oddly, in a pandemic year. But what happened is the General Assembly did not pass an overall budget last year. So, there were no across-the-board raises. Those expenditures did not get made. Also, the forecasters did not anticipate how much people were going to be ordering everything from Amazon. So, that forecast for sales tax was under what it's coming in at. So, that the projected surplus that they will get to deal with this year through spending or tax cuts is about $4 billion or more. And the forecasters cautioned that that is one-time money, because that sales tax increase is, that online shopping is not expected to go on forever. So, the one-time money.
What did they base that on? I don't know. I disagree with this, with what they think about it.
Disagree with the surplus?
No, no, I'm just, it's going to continue on. I don't think it's just going to go away.
Well, so... So, I tried to kind of wrap my head around it, and I don't know that I understand it very well, except to say that the sales tax increase from the online shopping, which constitutes, you know, a huge chunk of that, is not going to come back. Other things may come back. Economy may still grow. But, I mean, that's the best I can explain.
What other things are going to come back, I guess? Is that going to?
Brick-and-mortar stores, sales tax, hospitality industry, food and alcohol, those relationings are taxed.
I would agree with that. I think online is still going to be a big deal.
I agree. But they think it's going to level off, but I don't argue with too much of Matthews. People got used to it.
Yeah, they probably think people over-purchase during the pandemic. You got a lot of folks that bought exercise equipment for the house, and now, once the gyms start opening up, they can get out. And of course, everybody stocked up on groceries and all those type of things, too. And some of that was ordered online.
Yeah. So, the next task, Ms. Gill suggested that when they go back, they're out this week. When they go back next week, they're going to start working on the budget. And of course, since the state employees have not had a raise, or an across-the-board raise even last session, that will be an item. And there will also be some discussion about tax refunds or lowering taxes, reinstating the income tax credit, and that kind of thing. So, that's what's going on. Oddly, you know, in North Carolina, because of those factors, because we didn't have a budget, we have this projected surplus, which is good, of course. And there have been some changes in the governor's cabinet. Y'all may remember that Michael Reagan was appointed as the National EPA Director by President Biden. And so, Governor Cooper appointed a lady named Dion De La Gotti, who's worked at the Environmental Defense Fund and also with EPA. Tony Copeland, who was previously the Commerce Secretary, resigned. And a lady named Michelle Sanders, who was at, that's a typo, Biogen in the RTP, is now the Commerce Secretary. I included a lot of notes about, I knew we've been talking a lot about litter. There were some articles on that in the North Carolina Insider, where I gather a lot of my information. They suggested that in 2019, during the Adopt a Highway effort in the spring, volunteers picked up 75,000 pounds of trash. And since January 1, NC DOT crews, volunteers, and contractors, the mowing contractors pick up trash, have picked up 2 million pounds of litter. Wonder what that percentage is? Just 1% of it, maybe? I don't know. And as y'all know, the students are getting ready to return to daily in-person instruction next week. April 8 for traditional calendar students and April 14 for year-round students.
Unless they choose to stay virtual. You can choose to stay virtual. You can choose to stay virtual. You don't have to go back.
Right, yeah, we have that discussion in our house.
Yes.
There is a new app you could get on your phone. It's called the SWAT a Litter Bug App. And so, I guess... And so, I get, and what it suggests is that if you see somebody throwing trash out the window, if you have that app, maybe you can get a quick picture of them or something. I don't know exactly how it works, and get that information to DOT. And it says that they will write them a letter for you. Didn't say they'll do anything else, but will write them a letter encouraging them not to throw any more trash out the door. All right. And so, on our legislative agenda... Let's see. And so, on our legislative agenda, as I said, Mayor Marshburn and Rodney and I went through and worked on putting together that proposal. And we included the municipal advocacy goals from the league, included some items, include some items from the governor's proposed budget from the last cycle and from this cycle. And some, and also, we wanted to put in there that we want to keep our municipal election on track. Ms. Gill suggested that y'all might want to draft and pass a resolution to that effect that we could take there to the State Board of Elections if you wanted to. That was her suggestion, to keep that on track. And these other current bills that are pending. House Bill 7 is a controversial bill. It has been called the Whistleblower Act. The league opposes it because they believe it will give too much protections to an employee accused of misconduct, suggesting that that employee, if they're accused of misconduct, all they have to do is to call themselves a whistleblower to gain too much protection. I will otherwise leave it to Mr. Dickerson and our town attorney to know more about what we can and can't do with our employees, but that is the league's position on House Bill 7, to oppose it. The Historic School Preservation Act, there is a good article in my journals about that on page 18 of my March Journal. It involves tax credits. Again, found one about how cleaning up the highways. There is a bill called the Highway Cleanup Act that proposes some stiffer penalties for people who are littering. After that, there is a property tax relief bill for COVID-effective businesses, which we suggested opposing because it would take away some of our property tax when we're still providing services, correct, Mr. Dickerson?
Correct.
And another bill that seeks to roll back stormwater regulations in sensitive watersheds, we suggested that we could oppose that. Lastly, opposing the builder's inventory tax exclusion. I think this has come up before. Again, our, Mr. Dickerson, I believe, would explain, we're still providing services to that builder. Y'all have questions?
Right, right. Yeah, we went through that for the protection of homes, single-family homes, so now they're trying to extend it to townhouses. And it's the same argument that we still provide services, some police, you know, cleaning the streets and those type of things, even while the house is sitting there, you know,
Any questions? Y'all have questions? I may be able to answer them. And Mr. Singleton, just want to say I got my shot at Garner United Methodist Church this weekend. That was great. My first shot. And as I'm sure y'all know, the county commissioners and the school board have been preoccupied almost entirely with COVID issues, trying to figure out whether we're going to school or not going to school. Today, the county commissioners were talking about their emergency food insecurity response. They have worked on a lot with the YMCA, with the school system, and, of course, they've been working to try to get their vaccinations out. I applied to get mine through the county health department about a week ago, and I just got a response about a week later, inviting me to make an appointment. And by that time, I had already been to Garner United Methodist Church. And so, anyway...
Sam, let me interrupt. I know we're sort of past our nine o'clock recess, and I don't know if, maybe, just before we recess, if there are any quick questions for Mr. Bridges. But as soon as we finish that, we'll take our recess and then come back to this. This is a pretty comprehensible list of things, and it's pretty thorough. So, any quick questions before we recess from council?
I do. I know we've talked a lot about electronic, electric vehicles recently, and you know there's probably more and more of it in the news. So, my question is, have you heard any legislation around either tax credits, returning those or, more applicable to the town, any money in all this surplus set aside for infrastructure, for charging stations for municipalities, or anything like that? I think it's something we should advocate for. It'll benefit us in the long run and the rest of the county in the long run as well.
Yes, sir. I have not, however. Over the past couple of years, the transportation committees have had a select committee on future transportation impacts, and they have studied the impact of a lower, of less fuel tax, more electric vehicles, trying to figure out how to deal with that and to propose the taxes or revenues that would, you know, accommodate that change.
I think we should support money for the infrastructure of it, and they can figure out the tax part later. I know they're not really in favor of it because it hurts the tax revenue for DOT on the gas side, but that shouldn't preclude us...
Right. I know I have been to some of those meetings, and I know they have studied it a whole lot, but I'm not aware of any specific recommendations or bills that have come out of that yet.
My recommendation would be add it to our agenda or contact our representatives. I know we want to do some or look at it, and we need at least have the conversation started around looking at helping municipalities pay for it. So, that's my two cents on advocating for it.
Okay. And Mr. Bridges, I'm sure if you hear any inkling from the legislature in regards to this topic, you'll keep us, or you'll bring back to us any information, but it is a topic that interests a number of people and be curious to see if the legislature will bring it up. Thank you for your time, and keep things moving along. I'm going to suggest we take a 10-minute recess at this time or thereabouts. That will put us at 9:30. We have two more items, I believe, under new and old business before we get to the other items of the agenda. So, let's take a 10-minute recess at this time, and we'll come back and finish up. Okay, council, I declare we're back in session. Thank you for being timely. I'm going to move us right into Item 3 under new and old business, and I will recognize, I believe it's Ms. Harrison, did I say that right?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Leah Harrison, our Assistant Town Engineer. So, stormwater culvert replacement, those are necessary things. So, we'll hear from you, ma'am.
They are. Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Parkwood Drive culvert replacement. This project was brought to you all when we embarked on the design contract in the fall. So, you may be familiar, but we'll go through a little bit of background just to refresh your memory, talk about the work that we've completed to date. The main topic of conversation we want to go over tonight is to review the public-private partnership agreement that we've put together for this project, along with the cost share for that agreement, and to consider our recommendation for moving forward tonight. So, the location of this project is at 4422 Parkwood Drive, which is in the Greenbrier neighborhood. It's on the corner of Parkwood and Winter Locken. At the, you can see kind of toward the north property line there. At the time that this property was constructed in the '60s, there was an open channel that ran across that stream approximately in the alignment that you can see in the right-hand picture, which was an original utility easement that was dedicated by the developer. So, there was an open channel that ran against the, ran through the property. Sometime between 1975 and 1990, from as best as we can see from aerials and research, a previous property owner had decided to install a pipe across the property in lieu of the channel, so in an effort probably to use more of the property. He put corrugated metal pipes to carry the flow across the property instead of the open channel being there. In 1990, the property owner, which is not the current property owner, a previous property owner, constructed a driveway and a freestanding garage over this pipe. And you can see that kind of in the aerial view there. The pipe runs basically exactly diagonally across the lot underneath that driveway and the quarter of the garage. So, this was brought to the town and for a permit to build, but because this pipe was not installed by the town, it was not in any kind of public easement, so we really didn't have any power to stop them from constructing it here, other than to make a strong recommendation that they not build a garage over the pipe. But it was constructed there, and the pipe has run underneath the garage and driveway So, where we are now is, starting last year, this pipe started to show signs of failure. The current property owner contacted us last summer, starting to see some sinkholes and erosion on his property in the location of this pipe. This is a photo that was taken by the current property owner in July, last July. Again, another photo from last July, that's kind of right up in the northeast corner of the property where that pipe begins. And then, these are photos that were taken by our staff in September of last year as well. So, as you can see, the erosion grew very rapidly. We had a lot of heavy rain events during last summer and fall, and obviously, it's beginning to threaten the garage structure there, as well as the driveway that lies on top of it. And it's another photo, just another angle of the same. So, this particular project, this fix, was something that was desired by both the property owner for pretty obvious reasons. He stands to lose some of his private property. It's also in the interest of the town because this does connect to our public infrastructure downstream, so this failure could threaten our pipes that lie downstream of here. So, at the time that this was last brought before you, last fall, we were entering into a design contract with McAdams for engineering services to analyze and design a culvert replacement. They have now completed that design, and we'll go over an overview of the details of that, and put together a total construction cost estimate of $103,740.75. We have prepared a public-private partnership agreement and a cost share proposal. The property owner has agreed to the cost share, and we've drafted the P3 agreement for execution by the town and the property owner. This is an overview of the demolition plan for the project. There's a lot going on, but the red line is the existing pipe running across the yard. You can see where the garage lies and the driveway out to Winter Locken on top of the pipe. So, this is the pipe that is failing. And in the upper-right corner there is where you see the large amount of erosion where the creek enters the pipe that is currently there. So, the plan would be to remove a portion of this pipe at the very upstream end where we need to, and then fill the rest of it. The solution, the long-term fix, in addition to filling the abandoned pipe, is to install new pipe, which you can see in green. So, rather than crossing across the lot as the red pipe does, we would more closely follow the property line out to Winter Locken with a new pipe, install a new junction box for a turn there, and run the pipe down Winter Locken to tie in to the existing culvert that crosses Winter Locken going west. The public-private partnership agreement, that is a mouthful, is in your agenda packet in its entirety. As an overview, the proposal is that the town would be responsible for procuring construction and administering the construction contract for this project. The town would then accept permanent maintenance responsibility of this new infrastructure that ties to our existing infrastructure in the Winter Locken right-of-way. We would ensure that all of the new pipe falls within a public easement so that we have access for maintenance as needed and can restrict building on top of the pipe as was done before. And then, the property owner would reimburse the town for the owner's cost share of the agreement following construction. The way that we broke out the cost share proposal is that the property owner would be responsible for removal of the driveway, the rock wall that is there, the fence, and any vegetation, so basically, any items that were placed there by the property owner that are his private property, and the cost of filling and abandonment of the existing pipe that is outside any kind of public drainage easement. The town cost would be removal of replacement of the infrastructure that does lie within the existing drainage easement, and then installation of all of the new infrastructure, which we would have as public infrastructure moving forward. So, in terms of numbers, this broke out to approximately $11,985, or about 11.6% for the property owner, and $91,775.75, or about 89.4% for the town. And these numbers are based on the cost estimate. Of course, the final price to each party would be determined by the construction contract and the prices that were procured. Our recommendation is for council to approve the public-private partnership agreement and the cost share proposal as outlined, and authorize the town manager to execute this agreement with the current property owner, Michael Dargis. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a quick observation, and this will perhaps be made out of ignorance, but having served on the council for several years prior to becoming mayor, I guess these kinds of things have happened before, but I assume they are infrequent, kind of unusual occurrence to have, take place, and to be an issue over a long period of time. Would that be a fair statement or not? I don't know.
I wouldn't say that we see this, yeah, come up real frequently. I think probably more often than we realize, there are pipes that may be installed that we don't know about, and we don't learn about them probably until they do become a problem. So, this is certainly not something that we would expect to be happening on a very regular basis, and it's unique in that it's threatening private property and public infrastructure.
Counsel, any questions for our Assistant Attorney, Mr. Vance, your engineer?
Yes. Thank you for the briefing. Just want to know, was there any...
Just wanna know, was there any damage that we know of caused to the downstream portion of the stormwater drainage?
No, we have not been able to identify any damage. As part of the design process, they did camera all the pipes to look at the condition, and everything downstream seems to be intact. We haven't noted any damage downstream.
If this is approved, how soon can this be executed, the construction process?
Once the agreement is authorized, then this would fall within the informal bidding threshold, so we can solicit bids from a few select contractors, which should allow us to move forward with the construction within a few months.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
No, sir.
Gallagher?
Just a question, the property to the east, are any and all impacts on that property contained within the existing easement, or are there any impacts at all to that property?
No, there are no additional impacts. We would be looking at getting a temporary construction easement likely from the property just to the north. No permanent drainage easement would be required on that property, but we would need temporary access just to perform the work. And then, as much of the pipe as possible, the new pipe that we can fit in the existing public drainage easement, that it will lie there, and then we will just procure the additional needed on this property on 4422 in the corner for the headwall structure.
You could easily get easements for the north and the east property, because it seems to go right up to the property line for the east property. So, I just, any concerns of being on their property or affecting them, and if they're in the loop, that there may be work done or necessary?
Right now, the only property that the design consultant has identified as in need of a temporary construction easement in addition to 4422 is the property to the north.
Okay.
And if we do need, if it is identified that we need some to the east as well, then we will approach them for any kind of temporary easement that we might need.
Thank you.
Mr. Singleton, any question coming?
I appreciate the staff working with them. They ran this by Public Works Committee, just to get our feedback and how to move forward, and told them keep moving forward to get more defined costs and so forth. So, I appreciate them working with the property owner.
Mr. Behringer? Okay. So, counsel, you see the recommendation before you and the cost associated with that. I suppose we ought to take a vote on this, don't we? So, motion would be in order?
We approve the public-private partnership of 4422 Parkwood Stormwater Project.
Okay.
Second.
Take it here, okay. Motion properly before, it's in the seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, and it is so ordered. Okay. Let's see, Mr. Manager, we added item four, was that?
Correct. Fire budget amendment, and we should have Mr. Franks on to cover that.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. The mayor just forgot to say that to you, so I'll thank you. He got his mind on going to Colorado.
All of you should have, I guess, in conjunction with Mr. Franks, this memo, is that right?
Yes, sir. Has Garner great place to be heading?
So, Mr. Franks, we'll recognize you, sir, at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, members of counsel. So, this is an item that we missed getting on the consent agenda, fire departments. As everybody's aware, with the overall cost of Project B, there was an escalation between the initial estimate and the overall final cost. So, there were several departments, primarily the fire department did not receive the full allocation to cover the cost, so we underbudgeted them. Many of the other departments were not as impacted or able to cover it with vacancy savings. However, because of fire's lack of vacancies and just the size of the allocation towards them and the amount that we did not provide, they require a funding adjustment of $182,295 to cover the full cost of implementing the study, and that would cover their full cost for this year. So, based on that, town staff recommends that we utilize funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA, to cover this as it transfers, as its allowable cost to transfer to nonprofits. So, that would be a way for us to go ahead and utilize that funding, and we could potentially be utilizing fund balance and then reimburse ourselves. Final information, it's not out, but that would be the current recommendation. So, with that, I'll take any questions, and I know Chief Poole's on the line as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franks. Ms. Behringer, any questions for Mr. Franks?
No requests.
Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Questions?
Matthews? Okay, Mr. Vance?
Questions?
So, Mr. Manager, I guess we're asked to basically approve the additional funding that is mentioned here, is that correct?
That's correct, and just, I think this is clear, but not to get it confused with the other issues we're dealing with, with fire equity funding. This is for this year, and then the other matter is for next year.
Yeah. And this is built into the budget going forward, is that right, or is this a?
Yes, it would be, yes, going forward, yes.
Okay. All right, counsel, you've heard the request. What say you? A motion?
A question right quick. I talked to the mayor this afternoon, and he was calling council members about this. I told him, you know, we're gonna implement the pay study, we're gonna do that, but if we're gonna move forward with the county saying they're gonna pay starting in 2022 and 2023, I'd like something in writing from them that says that.
Right, and that's what that letter says for the issue going forward?
Well, make sure that we get something in writing from them that says that.
Yeah. Now, this-
Yeah, I have an email, but we wanna try to get something more formal.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
But on this issue, this counsel, yeah, recommend approval of this request.
I'm pleased.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Ms. Singleton, okay. Move properly seconded. Ignore the discussion. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye. Aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. Okay, and it's so ordered, all right.
Thank you so much.
Do we need to move into the equity issue?
Oh, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
I think everybody's pretty much aware of that.
Mr. Gibson has circulated a proposed response letter, and I believe most of you have seen it and maybe made a few tweaks to that, but we'll plan to get that sent right away, right?
Right, we'll get it printed tonight and have you sign it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So, committee reports, I'm not aware of any. Any committees met to give us reports? None? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Yeah.
The HR committee will start, there'll be an advertisement for the vacant positions that we know that are coming up in the very near future, and we will be having interviews soon thereafter. Just wanna put that out there, possibly even start with advertising early May, ending late May, with the interviews being in the June timeframe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, and that's, let's see, that's you and Mr. Dellinger, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, councilman.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible to get a copy of what you've received, upcoming vacancies, so, you know, we can disseminate the information to people out there, if that'd be possible?
Sure, I don't see a problem with that. We'll provide you with that.
Ms. Gibson could provide that, I believe, right?
Mr. Matthews, if you could see me afterwards?
Yeah. See her afterwards?
What's your question? I'm sorry.
She said if you could see her after the meeting, she could provide that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Is your report?
I have Garner info. I'll mention a couple of other things before I turn it over to the town engineer on the capital projects. Just want a reminder that the community cleanup is April the 10th through the 24th, and groups can register, or individuals, you can register by going to whitedeer.com and get on the list to help with the litter cleanup. Other thing I wanna mention is there will be COVID testing at Town Hall again, and that will start Thursday and go until Saturday, and that will be from 8:30 to 3:00. And then, I'll go back to number two. We have Chris Johnson on the phone, on the screen there, and he'll go over some of the items in the capital project status update.
Just a quick question, on the litter cleanup, I know there's a slew of dates through there, but is the focus on getting groups together on Saturdays, or?
They can do it anytime during that period.
Okay.
But Saturdays would be, you know, opportunistic.
Yeah.
Anytime they're willing to go out safely and do it.
I'm gonna be gone during the initial time, but I hope to try to be involved when I get back. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll recognize Mr. Johnson at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Yeah, I was just gonna touch on a couple highlights from the report that you have in front of you. I guess front and center for us right now, most active, what we've got going on is on the New Rand Road and Garner Road sidewalks project, items one and two. As you've probably seen, if you've been along that corridor over the last month or two, we've really made some good progress, although we have been the last month or so battling a lot of rain off and on. Hopefully, this week and last week was pretty good, so hopefully, from here forward, we can start making a lot more progress. We've got curb and gutter going in along the north side of Rand Road and moving towards putting in driveways and sidewalks. The retaining wall along, which was a large item in that phase, is nearing completion. And then, once they finish with the driveways and sidewalks, then they will move their forces over to the south side of Rand Road, as well as wrapping up the remaining work that was added via change order to Garner Road. So, looking to see a lot more progress on that project over the coming month. White Oak Roundabout, we are currently awaiting right-of-way authorization from NCDOT. As soon as we get that in hand, then the town attorney's office can move towards working with property owners on that project to put together initial offer letters and meetings for that project. Lake Drive is also in land acquisition phase, and the Joan Sausage Road project has just kicked off, and we have 15% design drawings in hand for review right now. So, we'll be looking towards moving those plans ahead and beginning the public involvement phase for that project this summer. The Vandor Springs project is also nearing the end of land acquisition phase, and we're gonna get plans finalized by the consultant and a bid package put together, so that we can put that out for bid this summer. And the annual resurfacing contract has kicked off, and we've already completed about, I think, four to five streets out of the 24 that we had slated. And I think the only other item I wanted to mention was update on the Garner Recreation Center project, although it's not on the list. We are working to put together a, the architect's gonna be doing a walkthrough later this week to verify whether the building is ready, considered substantially complete and ready for occupation by the contractor. The last set of window work and roof work that the contractor was working on do have held up during the rains last week. We haven't observed any further leaks in the areas that were problematic over the last several months. So, we're hopeful that the punch list later this week will be all that remains. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson, sure enough. Good to see some of these stages of these projects. Mr. Matthews, any questions, Ms. Johnson?
No, sir. I just had the opportunity to meet with Chris over there at the center, and he gave me the tour, and they were diligently working, so apparently, all that hell, he was hoping.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
Just one comment. I've received a couple of emails, or more than a couple of emails, from one of the property owners on New Rand Road. Is very pleased with the way Mr. Johnson has handled his inquiries and pulled together the contractor to resolve their issues and come up with a plan that was suitable. So, that's good to hear when somebody's happy with what you've done, and I think Mr. Johnson deserves some credit and recognition.
Okay, accolades from Mr. Johnson, thank you. Mr. Vance?
Yes, I just have several questions. Mr. Johnson, reference to the 50% design plans that are being developed now to go to the public meeting, I'm assuming the public meeting that's gonna be held in the future, will there be any type of limits on the plans to give a good idea of the potential property impacts?
I assume you're referring to Joan Sausage Road?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, Joan Sausage Road.
Yes. The first public meeting, I'm not sure if they typically have all of the impact shown, the 25% design level, but we would certainly have all those impacts determined by what we would usually have for a second public involvement meeting, which is prior to beginning the land acquisition phase, but we will have a rough idea at the first public involvement meeting.
Okay, I'm just anticipating questions in reference to those plans.
Yeah, we typically request for them to provide a horizontal alignment and horizontal layout of the stormwater, which would at least provide you a rough idea where the outlet locations would be with stormwater, which usually are gonna be your troublesome areas with impacts to private property. But more of that is done between the 25% and 50% design phase, and that's when you really get a chance to tie down the easement limits along the corridor.
Good, all right. Second question is, it pertains to the intersection of New Rand Road and, I wanna say, Bortmout It appears that the pavement wasn't possibly replaced there last year on Bortmout Lane. I may be mispronouncing the-
Bortmout, it's Bortmout, I think, just Bortmout.
Bortmout, yes, Bortmout Lane. And just want to, I'm not a pavement expert, just wanna know the quality of the asphalt that was put down, just getting some concerned citizens about the quality of the asphalt that's down there now, if, I guess, needs to be looked at, if you could provide an answer on that?
I'm not familiar with that location, but we can certainly take a look at that and find out what the concern's about.
And if you need clarification as to the exact locations, I can provide that to you, I may be killing the name of the lane.
No problem.
Okay. That's the only question I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dellinger, I don't think I got to you yet.
No questions.
And you? Okay, everybody had a shot? Do you have any?
As always, Chris, thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Hopefully, it was easier to read this month. Tried to blow it up.
Thank you, and we enjoyed having your assistant engineer earlier to work with us. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, before we conclude manager reports, I need to clarify that email address, or that website, I should say, for the cleanup, it's whitedearpark.com.
Okay.
Make sure you put the park in there, whitedearpark.com.
Thank you. For the public out there, whitedearpark.com, thank you. Okay, that's everything from you, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
And Mr. Turney?
Never part tonight, thank you.
Okay, council reports, I'll start to my left, Mr. Matthews.
I know we're gonna talk a little bit about a little bit, Old Stage Road, I don't know what was done, but I tell you what, it sure looked a whole lot cleaner Easter Sunday all the way down, so somebody got busy on Old Stage Road.
I think somebody organized a pickup out there, but I'm not sure exactly the names. Anybody know who it was? I heard some-
They did a very good job, whomever it was.
Good, yeah. Now, if we keep it that way, that'll be good.
Yes, sir, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer?
Just one question I have, when will public works start mowing? There's quite a few places, intersections and meetings in Pittsburgh, like Ragged Looking.
Okay.
So, do we know when that's gonna start?
I don't know the exact date. They're doing the cleanup now, but I'm sure right after they finish the cleanup, I'm sure they'll move right into mowing.
Not, excuse me, not talking about Highway 70, I'm talking about the off-roads.
Right, just in general.
Okay, thank you.
Normal, we can get a date.
We're mowing some in our parks, which is a big slot, but, yeah, I'm not sure anybody can get into those, okay.
They're still trying to complete the-
Sorry?
Unprepared.
Pickup, unprepared pickup. They're still working on that pretty hard.
Yeah. Dellinger?
I thank Mr. Hodges for chipping in. Last week, we had some issues with some of our meetings, and we're a little short-staffed, and so he stepped in and helped us smooth out the whole presentation, all the presentations we had. Thank you very much.
And thank you, sir. Mr. Vance, any report?
No, sir.
Okay.
Nothing, man.
And the mayor will defer on any reports, other than just to say to everybody, the general public, I hope our folks are- general public, I hope our folks are getting vaccinated as soon as they can, whenever they can. Certainly, there's an improved opportunity for that, I've found, and my wife and I are fortunate that we receive both of our vaccinations, so I hope others will follow suit as soon as they can, and places like Mr., I say Mr. Singleton's church, others attend there as well, I guess, but there are places like that have stepped up and provided vaccinations as well.
They were listed, you know, noted there'd be 1,000 vaccines, but they had over 1,000. They got close to 1,100, so maybe able to acquire, or maybe they had some extra, just hold them back, whatever the case.
Yeah.
So, they used them all up.
Great. Okay, at this point, I believe we are ready for a closed session. I believe that you see the first site there has to do with economic development. North Carolina General Sessions, 143.318.11A4. And then I've asked that we tack another one on there for personnel, which is the same site, 143.318.11A6.
Same move.
Okay.
Counsel?
All right. Let me make note that I believe we will stay in this room here for our closed session.